UBSutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Our Ed Commissioner Lisa Herbert will lead us in that. So this moment of silence is for the nation to make sure we have a safe transition of government and also let us remember those who have perished in the hurricanes last month. I was reading the other day that there are still 200 people that are missing. 200 people. And the families haven't found the bodies. It's really sad to those families. So let's remember that a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Lisa?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one presentation?
Well, Jenna Suma, please join the board up front for a presentation of a certificate of recognition to Robert Suma.
Is Jenna here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe Jenna Suma was able to make it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe we'll just do it another time. I thought they were here. Okay. Let's ask him to come forward at the next meeting and see if we can get it done. Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll have to bring that back and let's do public comment next. Members of the public are allowed to address the board on items of interest which the public or within the subject matter and jurisdiction the board is supervised. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay. Do we have any speaker cards for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have four speaker cards. The first public speaker is Tina Hessong.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Election season continues and the election industrial complex is showing its true colors in an explosive fireworks scene. My goodness, it's unbelievable. Here in Sutter County, I wanted to slow things down for a minute and express my gratitude to Donna Johnston and her magnificent crew of county employees and volunteers who worked diligently on behalf of the constituents of Sutter County. Thank you for your hard work, long hours, stressful moments, the many paper cuts, and your graciousness to me as I was watching from a distance. You are greatly appreciated. Today, I delivered a letter to Ms. Donna Johnston, and I'm going to read it to you. You should have a copy. Dear Madam, please be advised that the reporting of the 2024 election results for congressional candidates appear to be computer-generated in each of the election updates reported on November 5th and on November 8th. The results are consistent with other congressional candidates' reporting patterns in the state of California. It is recommended that the results reported are investigated immediately as the current reporting is following a predictable vote count tabulation pattern that is consistent with an algorithm result. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Piara Joel.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conant and members of the board and staff. I am here for the parade that was held for Sunday of this month. The parade is a good thing to have, but it does so much damage to us locals. It is unbelievable. Now, we've been farming in the neighborhood of that temple since 1965, and we have property nearby. We have approximately 180 acres. On four days prior to the parade, I personally had to go out there and rid you up of what I thought that the people cannot cross. Took me two days. Now, on Friday, they broke all lines. I had talked with the city. Part of that property is in the city, part of it is in the county, so both entities have to take the blame for it. I talked with the county after talking with the Chief of Police that where I'm talking about on Terabueno, it belongs to the county. Talked with Sergeant Berg, and he suggested that there will be officers to take care of the scenario. Well, there were two county cars, and I did talk with one, and they didn't do anything. And I showed them that the people are coming from Elmer Road through my property and doing damage, that they could see the lights coming up. Now, I had to hire a tow truck to have some cars towed, which was necessary for me to do, but that did not stop it. By Saturday morning, it was such a chaos. The road on Terabueno had A-frames on both sides of the road stating no event parking, yet it was packed with cars, and nobody took care of it. I even had bullies come through my property to challenge me, to say that they're going to pass through, so I had to stand up and say, well, you're going to do that? Let's do it. And across the side that Sarb Tera had the fence put up for parking, they busted that fence. Now, this young man that bullied me, and I told him he's not going past me. So he goes out there and tried to pull out a post that he could not. Jokingly, sarcastically, I said, "Son, try the other one. Maybe it's not as deep." So they backed off, and then the gentleman that was riding with him got out of that Jeep, broke that fence, which is plastic tied with zip ties. And I had to call Sarb up and say, "Hey, you know, this is what's happening." He said, "We're announcing it. We're announcing it." To be honest with you, the people that were in there, they were already parked, and nobody was given a hoot. So therefore, I ask you as the county to do something about it, because I have had 150 trees that are run over, broken, eight-inch main line. The gate is busted, which was three feet deep, and also an air vent that was three feet deep in the ground on a main line, eight-inch PVC pipe are busted. Now, you know, I cannot go out and keep doing the repairs unless somebody goes out there and do something to be it. So my concern is, you know, safety, whether it is mine or theirs, I don't know. So please advise me what I can do and what I cannot do. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can talk afterwards. Thank you. Next speaker?
Our last public comment speaker is Tony Farley.
Tony Farley, South Walton, Hay Park area. Yeah, Seek Parade was awesome. Free coffee, lot of first responders there, Queen Sheraparren, Sheriff Barnes Department, Chief Brian Baker, lot of first responders. I see Marisol Fire, I see Cal Fire there. I see all the non-yours there. Seek Parade is awesome. Know what I'm saying, Carmen? You're... Seek Parade was free, don't fruit for all of it. So here, thank Mike Zigamire for his service. Thank Dan Flores. He's also Star Wars guy. First Man Wonder Woman. Thank for his service. Also, Maraisville. Next parade is Christmas Parade. I'll be there with Recology, the Christmas Parade, a lot of firefighters, Christmas Parade, Recology too. Matt Conan, thank you for his service. Even though you drive a foreign Toyota truck, you should drive a big, big, big truck. Carmen Baines, you're John De Tractor, it's like Lamborghini car. Lamborghini, John De Tractor, thank you for your service. Nicholas Mitchell, Big Machine Gun Kelly, Al Capone. He's like, 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 he's like,[703.44]
117 acre into two parcels, a two acre homesite parcel for an existing residence and a 115 acre remainder agricultural parcel and also a variance for the creation of two parcels without frontage on a county road. With the approval of this tentative map, the proposal was required to record a standard development rights agreement on the agricultural remainder parcel, which is this property. This requirement was to ensure that no additional residential uses be constructed on the property, which would exceed the county's 80 acre minimum for each residence in the Ag 80 general plan land use designation. At that time, under general plan policies, homesite parcels can only be allowed provided that the development rights for the agricultural remainder parcel be dedicated to the county to avoid future violations with land use policies and requirements. The applicant was made aware of this at that time and a standard development rights agreement was recorded on the remainder parcel. Earlier this year, the applicant submitted an application to rescind their existing development rights agreement for this remainder agricultural parcel so that they could have their development rights returned for the property and allow for the future construction of another single family residence on the property, but on the remainder parcel. Staff has had several conversations with the applicant and their representative and advised them that this proposal was not consistent with existing county policies specific to development in the ag zone, residential density, homesite development, and that staff would not be able to support their proposal. At the request of the applicant's representative, staff brought the project before the planning commission for a quick denial recommendation to save the time, save time and money for the applicant and staff. On October 16th of 2024, the planning commission recommended denial of the project to the board of supervisors by a vote of 5-0 with two members absent. As previously mentioned, staff is processing this application under the quick denial process and therefore an initial study was not prepared for this project. Section 15270 of the CEQA guidelines states that CEQA does not apply to projects which a public agency rejects or disapproves. Staff has received no opposition or support for this proposal so far. Staff is recommending that the board of supervisors deny this project based on the findings listed in the staff report, which detail how the staff is unable to make the required findings due to conflicts with the development requirements for the ag zone, residential density, homesite development, and the zoning code. I believe our, the staff and the represented, I'm sorry, the applicant and the representatives are here to speak on behalf of the project and Neil Hay is also here to discuss any other potential options the board supervisors may have.
Okay. So let's, before we open the public hearing, I guess we should probably hear from the applicants, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then Neil, applicants?
Yes. Testing. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable board supervisors. I am Jim Whitaker. I am AIP consultant working on this project for the Herefords. The Herefords have complied with all of the county's policies. They've provided all fees, they paid for all fees and adhere to all the county's requests. At the planning commission, we did ask for a quick denial because we knew that it was going to have to come back to the board of supervisors and make that, you know, finalization. The board's going to have to be able to vote, I believe it's 5-0 in order to give, rescind development rights. Am I correct? Okay. Well, perfect. And then, so, once at the planning commission, not one resident has showed up to oppose it. The Herefords have done their due diligence, just talking to their neighbors and talked to their neighbors down the street. They fully comply and support their project. The staff report that you have before you is not really incomplete because it's missing the environmental documents and a planning review. So I'm going to pretty much make this pretty simple for you is that all we're asking for is that you direct staff to fully process the application, including the preparation of the environmental document and bring it back for consideration once the planning review is complete and the appropriate public notice has been provided. And I'll answer any questions if you would like.
Did the board have any questions? I guess we should.
I mean, through the chair.
Yeah, we gotta open up. Yeah, right, but, and Neil's got to speak too. Neil, do you want to go first?
I don't think Neil has to speak. I think he's there in case we have any questions.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. And yeah, I guess in regarding this manner, certainly, you know, Arwin, our principal planner, provided you with a description of the project and you've heard from Mr. Whitaker on the applicant's behalf. And the reason why I'm here is, you know, we wanted to explain that the reason why our department is recommending denial is that the requested action by the applicant essentially doesn't comply with the county's general plan or the zoning code. And staff tried to outline that in the staff report. But what we wanted to propose, you know, to yourselves and potentially to the applicants is that in the current general plan adopted, you know, the 2030 general plan, the area is designated Ag 80, which means that every parcel needs to be 80 acres or larger. And then you can only have one residence, essentially we'll say a home, you can still have an ADU as well, but you can only have one home, say, in those 80 acres. The challenge with the subject parcel right is it is not 160 acres, so it can't be subdivided further. Previously, in the 2015 general plan, the area along Pass Road in the Buttes was designated as Ag 20. And so you could have 20 acre parcels, obviously, for a portion of within the Buttes. And when the general plan was adopted, there was, you know, these policies that were put in place in order to preserve ag, and I think we all understand the importance of agriculture in our community. But, you know, I think as you're aware, my department is tasked with receiving and processing a number of applications that often come from agricultural families that want to do something with their property in order to continue their family agricultural farming tradition, but essentially our zoning code doesn't allow that to occur. And, you know, one, you know, option that I would propose to your board that you could, you know, direct staff is that we could, my department in conjunction with the ag commissioner's office, could get together and maybe prepare, come back to your board with a proposal to redesignate some portions of, we'll just say, the Sutter Buttes that were, you know, along Pass Road to where there's a number of 20 acre, 20 to 30 acre parcels already from the previous designations. And those families, they're ag families, and so there's farming taking place there and stuff, and it would allow, you know, the, some subdivisions to take place, for example, what the applicants have prepared. You know, there's a timeline to it. It could be, I'll just say, you know, six to nine months for all this action to take place relative to the general plan. In speaking with the applicant's representative, Mr. Whitaker, it seemed like that, you know, could be a possibility. They want to be able to use the land and we kind of want to propose it because it's something that our department sees, you know, happening in other places. And it also might be an opportunity to further study and report back to your board regarding the development rights and what our department sees regarding development rights because I think as your board is aware, every time that there's a lot line adjustment or certain maps put in place, the property owners, applicants have to have the development rights either changed or new development rights are placed on the property. And I think what my department would like to be able to explain to you is there are a number of other general plan policies and zoning code restrictions that make the development rights almost seem more than redundant. And there's a fee and a process, you know, to that, that it may be hampering, we'll just say, development or allowing property owners, you know, to do some things with their property. So that essentially was the comment I wanted to make. We're happy to answer any questions you might have, especially once you open the public hearing, but just wanted to put that for your consideration.
Thank you, Neil. So now we'll open the public hearing. Any speaker cards or people wish to speak on this item? Any members of the audience? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Chairman, I did turn in a speaker card, but I believe I did turn in a speaker card, correct?
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jim.
So, once again, I believe our, my clients are willing to accept any, you know, further ordinance that the county comes and you approve, as long as it fulfills their obligation of trying to get a second dwelling on their home. One of the things that, you know, that is a big elephant in the room is that, you know, under the, under the current policies that the county has is that, you know, the Herefords could put a second dwelling as far as a modern law squared at EDU out there, it'd only have to be 1,200 square feet. So regardless of the fact, you are going to get a dwelling out there at some point, whether it's 1,200 square feet or if it's 2,400 square feet, which, you know, the Herefords are asking for today. So I just want to keep you in mind is that when you're looking at these policies and everything, everything has to be constructive to be like, hey, wait a minute, you know, do we ever think about the side of the, you know, the grower and the farmer? The Herefords have been farming this property for, you know, over 30 years and they've been good stewards of the community. If you wanted to protect farming right now in the, in the area that Mr. Hay has already stated, it is to allow that, that second dwelling because it's going to maintain the Herefords, maintain their farming rights in that, in that area. So that's why, all I'm saying is that, you know, make sure that you look at all aspects, especially from my client's perspective and their point of view is that, you know, they've been, they've been farming this land for a long time and so they're not going anywhere and they've been great stewards of the community. So please direct staff to go back and, and secondly, I would also ask that you expedite this process with staff and tell them to make sure that, you know, they, when they're doing their environmental document and their planning review, because one thing I do want to ask and request is that it comes back to the board supervisors at the December meeting. And here's why, because I do not want to have to educate two new supervisors, all right, on a variance or on a planning review or environmental documents, okay? I feel like this board right here is highly educated to make that decision and that's why I'm requesting that you expedite this. Thank you.
So is there any questions for Neil or Jim before?
I have just got a quick question to the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Is Mr. Whitaker, are you and your applicants okay with what Mr. Hay has requested?
Yeah, I believe my applicants are open to any resolution that will get them to fulfill their, their goal of putting a second dwelling on their, on their home.
But I heard you say you want to come back next month and I heard Mr. Hay say that it might be a six month turnaround.
So.
Is that, did I hear something, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, it is correct. So the process we're discussing, wanted to take some consultation with the ag commissioner's office. There'd probably be an opportunity for a, a public town hall or maybe out in the community of Sutter. And then we could bring that, whatever action that, you know, my department's proposing, we'd have to bring it back before the planning commission. And so obviously the time to agendize that, and then afterwards we'd have to agendize it before your board of supervisors. And, and just to make you aware, unfortunately, there's, there's only two meetings in December at this time and the, you know, the agendizing period for those meetings is, is getting quite close.
So are the Herefords, are you okay with what staff's recommending?
Through the chair, would you mind supervisor if I have something to say? All right. First of all, I personally, I, I do not agree with anything you're saying up there, Neil, especially with blanket. I don't agree with the blanket format. I will not vote in favor of that. My constituents will absolutely vote against that. I believe we should take these on a case by case basis, especially, I love what they're doing up there. I've spoken with the neighbors and so forth. And the reason why I think throwing a blanket agreement on something like this doesn't help with the overpopulation and so forth. That means every 20 acres we're building and every, it's not just Pass Road, it's all over the county. Like I said, you're going to run into mom and pop, grandparent farming operations that have been going on for years and the only way for son, daughter, grandson to get into this is by building their own dwelling on the property. And that's why when they come before the board and we hear about everything, we do our due diligence and, and we vote on this. You could drive along Pass Road, you could see, you know, there's four family members, there's houses, I'm sorry. To get those homes, but, you know, when your family's been farming, in that case, you know, this other family over 200 years, it's not overpopulated, but there's a house, you know, here's 20 acres, 20 acres, 20 acres. I personally don't see the problem with that because that is their property and they're not buying these properties to resell. It's for their family. So, like I said, I believe each project is different and we should hear and whoever board comes before us after us should hear the same thing. So that's my stance on this.
So guys get, guys get an answer to my question? So are the, are the applicants okay with what staff's recommendation was?
Through the chair.
Through the chair. Mr. Hereford, would you mind going up to the podium?
Please come up here.
Just so we can, everyone can hear.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Supervisor Ziegler. I just, I think it should be a case by case situation. I don't think we should just take the Buttes and start breaking it up into 20 acre parcels. I mean, some of the parcels like next to us, the owners live in Chicago, there's no reason for them to break that into 20s. They don't have families that are going to build there. They don't have families that are going to continue the operation. I mean, we have a son that's actively involved in our farming operation and, and to get ahead anymore in this business is really tough. For him to go out and buy a plot or a lot and build a house would be extremely expensive and probably highly unlikely, where if we could just do it on our own property, continue doing our farming operation, because I mean, we're not getting any younger and sooner or later, somebody's going to have to take care of us. So, and it's, it's a lot of property to manage by ourselves along with our, you know, our custom harvest business and it's just a lot, you know, and it's, it's good to have him there helping and I think this would extremely help him out, it would help us out and, and I don't really see the harm in another dwelling on 115 acre parcel.
Okay. I just had a question for Neil. So Neil, if you look at that map, there's got to be a flaw on this, on this plan on the map because I don't see any driveway that's part of the, doesn't there have to be a driveway for a lot?
There's an easement.
Yeah, we have an easement on each side. One is a deed to easement.
It's not shown on the.
So essentially on the, on the aerial, on the aerial that you see there, you could see that from Pass Road, there's essentially a gravel road, dirt road that essentially makes it to the, the subject parcel. And so included within the applicant's application is they're going to be seeking a variance from your board to not have frontage on a county roadway. So should your board send this back to our department and ask us to process it? There'll be a number of variances that you'll be asking us to process and most likely, I mean, should your board send it back to us, I think it's going to be prudent for us to go and maybe change some of the requirements of the zoning code, because the zoning code says you can only have one parcel, I'm sorry, one residence in 80 acres, for example, with the zoning. And there's not a variance process for that. And what happens is your board has to make legal findings as to why you're allowing that to occur. So I think it might be prudent for our department to maybe come with a variance process for these type of applications if your board directs us. But just be aware that, yeah, they are seeking a number of variances from the county zoning code and general plan policies in order to facilitate a second residence on this property because, yeah, current standards of the county, you have to have 75 feet of parcel along a county roadway. So, and, and there have been other variances that have been created or granted throughout the county. So that is something that, that has been done. But once again, it's just, we thought the visual might kind of like help highlight it and we're happy to take direction from your board.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Neil, just a couple of clarification questions. First, I've heard some comments that you, that you were intending on breaking up the Buttes and a bunch of 20s and I didn't catch that from your statement. So can you clarify what you were saying about breaking up the acreage or, or actually you were making a recommendation to examine? What I understood is you were making a recommendation to examine, you know, the area and then make recommendations to us on what, which properties may be able to, you may be able to break up into smaller parcels, one, and two, to recommend some variances that would be allowable in a change to the ordinance code. So going in, forward in the future, we can have some consistency, because although I don't disagree with what we're thinking about doing for the Herefords here, I think that there should be some consistency going forward so that we don't run into the situation that frequently in the future.
Right. I appreciate that Supervisor Flores. So as I mentioned, in the 2015 general plan, along Pass Road, a little bit past Kellogg, the parcel, the general plan designations were Ag 20, so that you could have a property that could go down to 20 acre parcels. You'll see that there are a number of properties along Pass Road that are broken that way. If someone has a parcel that is more than 100 acres, it is not automatically broken down to a 20 acre parcel. It just provides a flexibility that if they wanted to break it down to 20 acres, they could. And that was just, like I said, merely a suggestion that my board or I, sorry, I wanted to make to your board for consideration. But if we rezone property, it still can be subject to the property owners' actual application to move forward with that process. A general plan designation just allows how land use could proceed in the future, either with, to preserve ag land or allow development, and it's subject to the discretion of your board.
And then just a clarifying question. So let's say that we go against staff recommendation and against planning commission today and then we recommend that the Herefords can move forward. You mentioned that there were several variances that would have to occur as well. Is that, is that a separate, how does that happen? Like, we haven't, we've actually never done this to this level, so just.
Sure. So my staff, Arwin and the other planners would take the project application, they would prepare the required environmental document, they would designate the findings that need to be made. One, it would go before the planning commission and then it would come before your board. But it would list out the variances, like I say, that would include, for example, there's no property of the parcel along a county roadway. So it's just a few variances that would be incorporated and your vote would have to vote on. I think what the applicants are expecting is that if you send it back to our department, the reason why this action has the term quick denial is that if you follow staff's recommendation, then essentially you're denying the application and there's nothing further that can happen for a year per the county zoning code. If you send it back to the department and we take the appropriate action, I think the expectation from the applicants is when it comes back forward through the process, it'll be approved. Right? And so that's typically why, you know, in the past, it's not hap, doesn't happen very often, but there are property owners and applicants that have done this in the past. And like I say, and then it's come forward and been approved by the board that was seated at the time. So that's, I believe, kind of like the expectation. And my department is, like I say, merely seeking, you know, direction from your board and we're trying to offer options. And if we do not have to rezone the properties and stuff, then that simplifies the process and it can just be on an application by application period, process. But I do feel that if, you know, it could be either a further direction from your board or we can leave it the way, I may have to consult with county council, but, because if we want to be able to do that, then I think your board needs some flexibility within the zoning code so that it's, there's not any clear contradictions, right, of the zoning code and the general plan policies with this type of actions and it gives your, the board at the time, greater discretion.
Sure, I understand.
Through the chair. I have a question for counsel. Bill, if you're allowing all these variances, there's no issue with the California constitution, is there, where all these laws have to be applied to everybody equally? It's a case by case basis, can we legally do that?
Well, the problem that we have with this is we have, our zoning code has set up certain requirements for what, what the board has discretion to do. The application that is being presented is asking the board to waive those. And so that makes any decision of this board subject to challenge by any other member of the public who could then say it's, it wasn't consistent and then it could be set aside.
Okay. That, oh, that was my concern. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
You know, we've done variances, you know, we just did variance for this 76 gas station in Sutter. So, and once again, variances are, it's, it's, every project that comes before this board is going to be different, everything. I mean, we just don't assume that, hey, there's a variance, there's a way to get through this, because it's not always like that. Every, every project is different and I look at everything differently. And we speak with the neighbors, we speak, we look at the surrounding areas. And that's why I like the variance policy. And the reason why is because if we didn't have that, we would have our hands tied with every type of development whatsoever, especially here in Sutter County. I mean, if I could give variances on every building in a FEMA flood zone, I could, but we know that we can't do that through FEMA when they locked in those maps. But like I said, in this project, this is different from any other project and I look at, I'm only looking at this project, I'm not looking at any other projects. We'll figure that out when those come before the board. But is there a path for this, Bill?
Yes, there could be. The, the main issue that we have is we have set the rules and we would be following our rules. We can then change the rules and then we would follow those rules. To the extent that we have rules, we don't follow the rules, then it could be subject to a fight because we haven't followed our own rules. I believe what Mr. Hay is suggesting is that we change our rules so that the board has the discretion within our, within the zoning code to make those, those changes.
Yes, but Mike, what, what I'm nervous about is by changing those rules is now it's not every project is, is different. Every project just got thrown in the same basket, which means they're all treated the same. And that's not the truth in this, is, is, because every parcel is different. So what I'm getting at is.
The idea of the, of a variance is there are, I believe in this one, there are five different findings that have to be made in order to meet their criteria. What staff is indicating in this case is that three of those criteria cannot be met to, to warrant the variance. The, the, the fact that you have those five different variables makes it specific to every individual case. And so you take the request and you go through those five different things to make a determination of whether the variance is appropriate. So variance procedure in itself is a fact specific situation.
Variance is also, is the board discretion. So the board has discretion in order to support variances. And one of the things we haven't talked about is, is if it's that simple for variance, it might be a variance for looking at, at the ADUs, you know, and that could be a variance. So my recommendation still is to direct staff to fully process this application. And so, and also that will give time for Mr. Hay and I to get together and meet and maybe our applicants, our clients can meet as well and see what, if we can come up with a resolution before the December meeting.
I'm still concerned about the driveway issue. So my question is to maybe Jim or whoever, are you going to share a driveway or how, I mean, because I think by law we have to have a separate, I mean, a driveway to, for egress for fire and emergency services.
They currently have two easements on, on their property that they, they utilize. And so, and believing that they're, they're with enough, that they're long enough and wide enough that for emergency services to get back to their properties.
Through, through the chair. My, my concern was not that, I'm, I'm sure nobody's going to challenge this project. I mean, I think that most of us would like to see you do what you'd like to do there. My concern is for the future of somebody challenging any of these variances that we allow them. That's, that's my concern is just from a legal standpoint of how that's going to process in the future, so.
Follow up on that through the chair. The question I have, so, again, I think Supervisor McKelley is correct, most of the, or the whole board probably supports this project moving forward, but the consistency of the future is the question mark, right? So I look at the staff's option and I was wondering if there's a blend, like if we support this tonight to move forward, but also support moving forward with the study at least of what we're, the options are for the future and when it comes to cases like this, what would that look like? Is there a way to do that or is it, does that complicate matters or do we just like choose an option instead? I don't know, who would, who would, legal counsel or Neil, who would be best to answer that? Probably Neil.
So I think from my department's perspective, we probably could maybe add and incorporate some other variance process for these types of land use applications. Like I say, that, subject to the types of findings that need to be made so that it would allow the board, you know, more clarity and so that it couldn't be, you know, challenged by an outside party, it'd be very clear as to the findings that were made and, and why at the time the board felt that it was, was reasonable and, and fair and objective, right? And so I think that's kind of the point that I was trying to make is that there are some things right now that, like I say, there may even need to be an amendment just to some of the general plan policies so that if you do have an Ag 80, like the general plan policies don't have a variance process, right? They, they just say what they say, but we can incorporate something in bringing this action back before your board. by an outside party, it'd be very clear as to the findings that were made, and, and why at the time the board felt that it was, was reasonable and, and fair and objective, right? And so, I think that's kind of the point that I was trying to make, is that there are some things right now that, like I say, there may even need to be an amendment just to some of the general plan policies, so that if you do have an ag AD, like, the general plan policies don't have a variance process, right? They, they just say what they say, but we can incorporate something in bringing this action back before your board.
Good.
So, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you have to close the public hearing.
Oh, but, I thought we already did, I guess we didn't. Okay. Close in public hearing? I thought we did that. No, anyway.
Need to bring Supervisor Whitaker back.
Yeah. And then, we had a discussion of the board, and so now we need a motion, or what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I don't, I can't state it as eloquently as Neil did, but that is an option that I would like to propose. So, and I don't know what that motion looks like. Legal counsel, maybe you can wordsmith it for me, but basically, moving forward with the Herefords project, but in the meantime, creating potential variance opportunities for the future, or, I'm not, I'm not sure that's the wording, but something along those lines. That's what I would like to make a motion to proceed on.
I think what the board would be doing would be directing staff to move forward with the application that is presented, so not denying it. And at the same time, look into the, the building, or the zoning code and the general plan to make determinations as what needs to be changed in those, those documents in order to allow these sort of plans to go forward.
What he said.
I'll second that.
So, so, one, one comment I have before we vote is, I, I would caution staff that we still need to make sure that there's adequate egress for this property in the future. Let's say you're, let's say something happened with your son, or whatever, and he decides to sell, his family decides to sell that house. The future people have to have access to that property, and you have to have access to your property as well. So, I just would make sure that staff recommends that we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater on the emergency services and so on and so forth.
We appreciate that comment.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number 21.
Ratification of an application submitted by the Sutter County District Attorney for the Office of Traffic Safety Alcohol and Drug Impaired Driver, Driver Vertical Prosecution Program Grant for the performance period of October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. Authorize acceptance of the grant proceeds in the amount of $223,075, and authorize the district attorney to sign the grant agreement, all related grant documents, and related agreement amendments. Authorization for the district attorney or their designee to fulfill the conditions of the grant, and approval of an adjustment to the fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget, increasing appropriations by $169,983 within the district attorney budget, offset by alcohol and drug impaired driver vertical prosecution program grant funds.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of the board. We are seeking ratification of the application submitted by the Sutter County DA for the Office of Traffic Safety, also known as OTS, Alcohol and Drug Impaired Driver Vertical Prosecution Program Grant for the performance period October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025. We're asking that you authorize acceptance of the grant proceeds in the amount of $223,075, and authorize the district attorney to sign the grant agreement, all related grant documents, and related agreement amendments, and authorize the district attorney or their designee to fulfill the conditions of the grant, and approve a budget adjustment to the fiscal year 2024-2025 adopted budget, increasing appropriations by $169,983 within the DA budget, offset by the OTC Alcohol and Drug Impaired Driver Vertical Prosecution Program Grant Funds. We are coming to you requesting ratification rather than approval prior to applying for the grant, because time was of the essence to try to apply for the grant. There is an extreme urgency to get the grant, given the statistics for drunk driving in the county of Sutter. And I would point out, there is no match requirement with this grant. So, Sutter County ranks seventh out of California's 58 counties for alcohol-involved crashes. In 2021, Sutter County had a total of 117 alcohol-involved crashes. That's just crashes. That does not include the, just the regular DUIs where there is no collision. We are being overloaded with DUI cases, so hiring a specialized deputy DA to prosecute, prosecute DUI cases is a necessity. I recently did the misdemeanor calendar, and out of roughly 100 cases, I would say 85 of them were DUI cases. It is a serious problem in this county. We are now using a vertical prosecution model, so the DUI prosecutor will be handling charging, the pre-trial stage, and disposition of criminal cases. The prosecutor will be available to devote adequate attention to DUI cases, which do present unique charging, evidentiary, and trial issues. Grant funds will also be used for testing of unusual cases that require complex toxicology. Some of the requirements of the grant are that we do need to issue a press release announcing the grant by November 15. We have that ready in anticipation of your approval. Other benefits are, we will partner with the California Traffic Safety Resource Prosecutor Training Network to provide comprehensive training in the prosecution of DUI alcohol and DUI drug cases, not just for our prosecutors here in Sutter County, but in the region. We would coordinate with local law enforcement agencies on the development of an on-call-response protocol for the investigation of fatal and major injury DUI vehicle crashes, and to report on responsive activities. We will also partner with local school and/or youth organizations to provide educational programming about the dangers and consequences of driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs. And that part is huge. So, we are requesting your approval, or your ratification, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jennifer?
No, through the chair.
Through the chair.
Yeah, we have to ask for, is there any member of the public, no public speaker cards? Any member of the public wish to speak? Seeing none? We'll call for a motion?
Oh, hold on, I just want to make a comment. So, I just want to say, District Attorney Dupree, thank you. This is a really great that you're doing this, and I really appreciate your, your willingness in pushing this forward. I think this is a really important topic to be addressing, and I fully support it. So, with that, I'd make a motion to, for the recommendation.
Through the chair.
Second the motion.
Through the chair.
Second, yeah, Mike?
Now, I was excited when the DA told me about this last week. This is really huge, because, you know, I have one daughter in high school, I know Supervisor Baines has a daughter in high school, and just hearing the stories about this, everyone did it when they were kids. When I say did it, drank at parties and so forth. And there's more cell phones nowadays, even there's more cell phones. Gosh, I think 98% of the populated area in this area has a cellphone. Just call someone to get a ride. And what's happened is there even, you know, when you're under 21, you have a half a beer or a somewhat that registers .01 is, that's, that's the limit. It is not .08 like it is for over 21. And the kids are starting to push the envelope even more and more, and we've seen it. I've seen it from kids, I say kids, younger than 21 in the area, and we've got to do something to, to curtail this, because I don't want it to be one of my kids, or one of your kids, that it's not so much getting behind the wheel, it's someone else getting behind their wheel, and hurting someone or taking someone's life. So, I love, the preventative portion of it was a big deal, and being able to educate, because we've got to pound it into their heads that, just don't drink and drive, you know, call someone, it doesn't matter, you know, there's, everyone's got someone they can call and wake up at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, or anyone. But, great work, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jennifer, I'd give a ditto to Mike, but am I wrong? Isn't it .00 for under 21?
.01. And not only do you lose your license, you lose it for either a year or until you're 21.
Yeah.
So, just spreading knowledge of that fact could potentially be a big deterrent that, and aggressive prosecution, and having someone who can specialize and be more aggressive will be helpful.
Yeah. Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item number 22. Steve Smith will presenting.
Authorization for the county administrator to extend an existing agreement with KNN Public Finance for municipal advisor services for an additional year.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. This agreement, as mentioned, is just to extend the contract agreement with KNN Public Finance. The county's used them in the past and has, for real property purchases, and has also sought advice on some financial policies and documents related to Sutter Point. It's anticipated we may need some assistance in the future, so just wanted to go ahead and get this approved for an additional year. There is some existing budget for such contracts, so if we would need further appropriation authority, we could come back, but for now, we don't believe that's the case.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any speaker cards? Nope. Member of the public? Nope. Okay. We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Roll call?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay. Item number 23. Laura?
Approval of adjustments to the fiscal year 2023-24 adopted budget, increasing appropriations and offsetting revenues for fiscal year-end cleanup, and adopt a resolution authorizing the county administrator to tentatively approve amendments to the fiscal year 23-24 adopted budget to allow processing of year-end transactions necessary to close the county's financial records for fiscal year 23-24, subject to ratification of the Board of Supervisors at the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting held on December 17, 2024.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and members of the board. Laura Granados, Deputy County Administrator. Each year, the county administrator's office works with the county departments to finalize accounting entries for the prior fiscal year. As one of the final steps in this process, it is recommended that the board approves an adjustment to the fiscal year 23-24 adjusted budget, to budget for appropriations and revenues in various cost centers based on the year-end activity. One purpose for these adjustments, beyond simply balancing the budget, is to relieve county officials of the personal liability described in Government Code 29121, which states, except as otherwise provided by law, obligations incurred or paid in excess of the amounts authorized in the cost center appropriations are not a liability of the county or the dependent special district, but a personal liability of the official authorizing the obligation. So, year-end budget overages are generally out of the control of responsible department heads. With the implementation of the Workday Enterprise Resource Planning System, which has been very complicated and lengthy, closing the financial books has been unavoidably delayed due to changes in the account structures and business processes. State law requires that the auditor controller submits the adopted budget each year, no later than December 1 of that year. For the fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget, this cannot be done until all prior-year transactions are complete. Certain transactions, such as treasury fees and subscription-based information technology arrangements, must be posted, but often do not have sufficient appropriation authority to support these costs. Each year, the county administrator submits a cleanup budget amendment to the board to ensure that legal requirements for sufficient appropriation authority are met. The budget amendment presented in this action includes a number of these types of actions, but despite diligent efforts by departments and the auditor controller's office, a number of transactions still remain unprocessed. Thus, an additional budget amendment will require approval from the Board of Supervisors. Today is the only regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting that will occur before the December 1 state controller's deadline, so it is recommended that the board adopts a resolution to provide the county administrator with the authority to tentatively approve budget amendments. An action to ratify those approvals will come to the board for approval by the second meeting in December. Any increase in appropriations within a fund or between cost centers requires a four-fifths vote of the Board of Supervisors, so scheduling a special meeting in November is extremely difficult. Even with the authority of the county administrator, the ultimate approval of the budget amendment cannot be delegated to an individual. Thus, ratification will be necessary and will occur timely after the tentative approval is made by the county administrator. CAO staff requests the approval of the budget adjustment in the amount of $20,795,370 for the first round of fiscal year-end cleanup. The adjustments balance budgets to cover overages in the specified cost centers matching actual revenues and actual expenses where necessary. There is no net change to the general fund unreimbursed costs for fiscal year 23-24. Additionally, CAO staff requests adoption of the resolution authorizing the county administrator to tentatively approve the amendments to the fiscal year 23-24 adjusted budget to allow processing of the remaining year-end transactions, which are necessary to close the county's financial records for 23-24. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any speaker cards? No speaker cards? Any member of the public? Seeing none? We need a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Roll call?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, item number 24. Steve Smith, Administrator, will present.
Approval to appoint Kathy Scriven as Sutter County Assessor, effective date December 31, 2024, subject to and conditioned upon the retirement of Assessor Todd Rutzloff.
Thank you. So, one quick change to the recommendation I'd like to make is to make it effective upon the current assessor leaving office, which is at the end of December. However, in case the date changes a day or two, we'd like to have that flexibility. Is that, okay, covers that. The current assessor, Todd Rutzloff, is looking at retiring at the end of December. He's been with the county since, won the election in 2010, so all of 2011 through today, and the end of the year, so approximately 14 years. And I think we'll have something separate, hopefully where we can recognize Todd for the great service he's done for the county, and it's been a real pleasure working with him over the years. So, but, more on that when, when we have something official moving forward. And in the meantime, the recommendation is for the board to appoint Kathy Scriven. Ms. Scriven has been the assistant for three and a half years, has an additional, approximately 22 years in Calusa County and Yuba County, and various real property appraisal and auditor appraisal positions. She has, you know, extensive experience, and has been a really valuable team member to the department heads, and throughout the property tax software implementation and the Workday ERP implementation. So, it, this is a good natural fit, and she's proven very valuable to me as well when working on Sutter Point and other property issues. And I think that's all I have to say on it as far as Ms. Scriven and Mr. Rutzloff are here.
Any speaker card? Nothing. Any speakers of the public? Seeing none? Is there any questions or comments from the board?
Through the chair. I, I think, you know, this is, like I said, you know, Todd is elected, and we're very lucky to have someone of Todd's background and, and knowledge of this area, serving in the position that he serves at right now. And we're very lucky to have someone in the office, is Kathy, who has come through and come up through the rankings and so forth, and very bright, very knowledgeable. We all did speak with her the other day, and I was very blown away. And I think the people in Sutter County are going to be in great hands with the, your new leadership. You know, we go from great leadership to another new leadership, so we're very lucky. Thank you for, for putting your hat in there for that position.
Good, Chair.
I have to ditto what our supervisor next to me said here, Mike said, and I just want to say that Kathy, your talent hasn't gone unnoticed, and I'm really happy to see that. And I think Todd, excellent choice, or Kathy will do a great job. We're gonna, I don't know if we're celebrating you leaving or what we're gonna do here, but yes, Steve said that we're gonna have a celebration, right? But, you know, we'll do that later, but for right now, I think this is a great moment where we're recognizing talent that, you know, that you worked, I mean, you were created together in this department, and just being able to do that, and then you filling the shoes, I'm sure you'll do great. So welcome aboard.
Good, Chair.
Yes.
Dittoing my colleagues up here, I just want to congratulate you, Mr. Rutzloff. Todd, you did an amazing job. Want to thank you for your dedication and commitment to Sutter County for the last 11 years. And Kathy, you obviously have been working in there, to that department, sorry. But no, if there's no further question, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Mike? Nick?
Oh, no, I think we'll have plenty of time to say how great of a job that Todd did later on when we actually bring him up here, so, but happy to have you on, Kathy, so, looking forward to it.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Hope you do a better job than Todd did on my property.
Anyway.
Throw that one in.
Are we gonna have a roast for Todd? Is that what?
Roast him, yeah. Burn him down. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most passed unanimously. Alrighty.
The Chair, if we may, could we allow some comments regarding Ms. Scriven? Hopefully, I mean, I think they're positive comments from Todd Rutzloff and/or any comments Ms. Scriven would like to make.
He kinda shook his head earlier.
I think he was like, uh, what?
Obviously, this is really easy. Kathy has done an awesome job, but first of all, like the board chair, board, you know, I came into this with the hope to, you know, do something for our community and make something better than I found it. Hopefully, that was done, you know, and fortunate, like you guys, being able to serve our public. And, you know, thank you for the board's support all these years, administration, the department heads. Sutter County is really lucky to have some of the wonderful department heads. When you compare them to other counties, how fortunate we are. And staff, you know, gosh, we are so lucky, Kathy and I, to have such a great staff that, you know, doing the conversion, you know, having a good, tight team, because that was a heck of a rough road. And Kathy really took that on and did an amazing job of learning the system and still is learning. I mean, she keeps diving in deeper and finding out things that this system can do that I know that she'll make it even better over the next tenure that she has, hopefully a long one. Anyway, that's pretty much for it. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you to all of you for considering me for this position. I have a big shoes to fill following Todd, and I know you guys appreciate his hard work and dedication. And he's left a big mark on the county, and he's left a big mark in our office. He's done a great job at building a team that I am honored to continue to build, and I am excited to lead. We can't do it without all of our help, and I'm looking, I'm very excited to have built good relationships with other department heads, and will continue to work out and reach out to all of you to maintain transparency, integrity, and provide the service that all of us expect from our constituents. So, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, Todd, job well done. Don't leave yet. I got a question for you that I think is important that the public realize.
No, we're not reviewing that property again.
So, Todd, when you took, you've ran this office much, very efficiently and very cost-effectively. When you took over as assessor, didn't you have a staff of roughly 24?
Gosh, Steve might remember, 25 or 26.
26. And what's your staff level now?
14 plus a part-time.
And I know you did that through efficiencies of modern technology and computer systems and other things as well.
I just made them work harder, to be honest, no.
And maybe people working harder. But anyway, I just think that's great. The county cannot afford to have, you know, so many staff, and we have to be much more efficient and run a tight ship, and you've done that in your office. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, again, it comes back to the support of the board for a new software system and, you know, administration supporting us. So it's a team, right? We're all a team trying to do the best we can for the county, and, you know, obviously, you guys have been right there for us, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Todd. Okay. We voted on that, right? Yep, we're done on that one. Okay, now, Steve, you're up.
Yes, I wanted to mention, on number five today, it was the approval of an adjustment for the fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget, increasing appropriations by approximately 3.8 million. On that item, we had some additional schedules, which we did pass out to you and set upfront for the public. However, I should have asked for that to be pulled or for the, so that the vote could be stated to include the added schedules. Would you please, if you will, re-vote on number five, which was on consent, to just acknowledge that the additional schedules were included in that vote?
I think you made the original motion, didn't you?
Yeah, so just to approve for consent, item five.
Yeah, and through the chair. Like I said, I assumed we were voting on that, you know what I mean? It was in the staff report, and yeah, so just to clarify.
I just wanted to be clear for the public.
I apologize, Steve. I had originally planned on pulling it when staff mentioned it, and then we decided we didn't need to, so that's why we're in this confusion, so.
Oh, no, no.
Anyway, so we have a motion and a second?
I will second, yeah, I think I said.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seen and signed? Most passed unanimously. Okay. Now, do you have anything else, Steve, you wanted to bring up?
No announcements this week, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have correspondents. It's all on the report. We have district reports. Mike, you want to fire off?
Closing memory of Mary Whitaker. And, you know, we're gonna have a nice plaque and so forth together there for you, Todd. You know, we'll get that in there, big old hurrah, so you save, yeah, for the roast, yes. So you're coming back, partner. So, you know what? It's sports. We'll talk about sports. East Nicholas, East Nick's playing for the championship this week, I believe, against Vanden.
Tonight, they're playing, they won sections for the fourth year in a row.
That was a section, and then they play tonight, then is against Vanden.
Yeah, and they are currently 27-0.
So this is the state playoffs right here. State playoffs, just for those. Yeah, so that's really awesome. Hopefully, they take it all the way, get a state championship to match their state championship in football. Sutter High School is in the second round of the playoffs, playing Oakmont this Friday at home. I'm not sure about the other teams in the area, but like I said, it's playoff football right now. And then we go into basketball season. Wow, this year is flying by fast. Other than that, stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that we had a really good time at the parade for Veterans Day this weekend. It was great. Supervisor Ziegemeyer, Supervisor Conant, Supervisor Baines, and myself, we were in the parade. It was rainy and it was cold, but we really enjoyed it. We got to be out there with the community, and it was fun.
Eight bags of candy.
Yeah, we had a lot, we had, we put out eight bags of candy. I don't know how many Supervisor Baines ate himself, but it was quite a few. And then Supervisor Baines and I were walking, and Supervisor Conant and Ziegemeyer, they were way out, like, I think we lost them at one point, didn't we? But anyway, it was great, and I just want to thank the veterans for their service. I mean, just amazing turnout of veterans were at that parade as well, and it was great to be a part of that, thanking them.
I understand Mike or Nick had to leave for a minute, but he had nothing to report. Carm, did you have something?
I do, I do. Thank you Supervisor Flores. It was a great parade on Monday. It was very nice to participate, and we're obviously thankful and grateful for all those veterans and their services, the service that they've provided us. But the rain didn't stop us, so it was, it was sad that the rain stopped as soon as the parade was over. That was a, that was kind of a sad deal, but, but going back to the November 3, the 45th Annual Sick Parade, Supervisor Ziegemeyer, our CAO Smith and myself, we presented the proclamation on behalf of the county to the folks out at the temple, and in return, we were recognized by the temple leadership. I know that I, our last meeting, I apologized in advance to members of the community for the traffic and logistic nightmare that usually brings. But on a positive note, the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation is conducting a study on the economic impact and the revenues that it does bring into our community, so I'm looking forward to seeing that next week. On the 5th, on Election Day, our CAO Smith and myself, we had the opportunity to meet with our state treasurer, Fiona Ma, and it was a great meeting. It was actually a follow-up to a meeting that she had, a visit that she had here in the Yuba Sutter region. She actually attended the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation meeting, and so this was a follow-up to that, where we talked about the opportunities that Sutter County would have with their office regarding grants, low income, or sorry, low-interest loans and other funding programs in an array of different areas, including infrastructure, agriculture, and other, other areas as well. I guess Supervisor Ziegemeyer beat me to it, but I was gonna ask for some formal recognition in the form of a plaque, but I guess we were gonna have a party as well for Mr. Rutzloff, for Todd, for his services, for the, for years of service and dedication to Sutter County. I'd also like to request a, an individual from our community to be recognized, and that's Christopher Pedego. We don't have a PIO for Sutter County, but it just seems that he's at every community event and always captures pictures of us there. I mean, the guy's stand-up for our community, and I don't think he's ever been recognized, so I don't know if it's just gonna be a simple plaque, but I'd really like to make sure that he understands how important he is to our community and how much we appreciate him in all that he does. And then, in closing, I'd like to, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Patricia Dirks of Yuba City. She was a poll worker for Sutter County for over 20 years and was killed in a vehicle crash this weekend.
Thank you, Conant. All I had to say, it was a very nice veterans parade, and I'd like to ditto everything everybody else said, and thank all the veterans for all their service to this community. And we have a lot of veterans here that are retired, who live in this community, a lot from Beal and so on and so forth, so they're an economic driver to our community as well. And I'd just like to thank all them. And I'd like to thank Mike for his belly-hoing of East Nicholas's great victory, and hopefully they win tonight. So with that, we will entertain a motion to do the condolences and the board considerations.
Move through.
We have a motion by Carm.
Second.
And by Dan. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Seeing none? Most passed unanimously, and meeting is adjourned.
Yubasutterlives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.